We'll pass seven, we'll call the meeting in order. For the record, if you'd state your name from my left to my right.
Lyndon Novak, present.
John Simon, present.
Connie Entinger, present.
Randy Breckman, present.
Ryan Rockoff, present.
Mark Cecil, present.
As a having quorum, we'll call the meeting in order. First business is the adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's adopted. Before we start, I'd just like to state procedural things regarding this meeting. This is zoning board of appeals, it's a quasi-tribal body. First, we will have a new business, is the presentation of the case. And cases presented, we'll have discussion with the building official, then we'll have a discussion of the applicant, then we'll have it open for public discussion, and then we'll close the public discussion, have discussion among the board. And the board will determine finding of facts based on what's presented to us in writing and by the applicant and by the building official. And after we have the finding of facts, those are the facts which we will base the decision. And then we'll have a vote and a motion to approve or deny or whatever we're going to do on it. And then we'll have a vote on that and conclude that and go on to the next thing which approval is the July minutes. That being said, turn over to Bill Dinnon to...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under your new business, the next agenda item is case number twenty-five dash zero-zero-four, which is the property located at two-six-one-five-five Hawthorne Drive. It's an R-three zoning. There's two items for this particular address this evening. The first would be section twelve-sixty-eight point two-eight B-two-E, and it has to do with a prohibited design, which states, "No primitive fence of any variety may contain decorative toppers, finial spheres, or other fence toppers which contain a pointed finish if such decorated decorative items are situated along the top of the primary fencing materials." Ball finials are permissible, but only if they measure not less than three inches in diameter. The fence application states, per the applicant, that the fence materials will be a three-rail with spear top on it. So that's why this portion was denied. The fence application indicates it to the spear-top aluminum, which is in violation. The applicant's requesting a variance to allow the spear-top finials. Mr. Chair, do you want to deal with these both at once or separate them? I probably recommend that you separate them because they are two separate issues.
That's why I'm here, to oppose the variance, I don't know whether I speak, but...
No.
Yeah.
Where do we get the... It does make sense, but to separate them, it's not a problem to separate them.
Okay.
It just, well, we'll cover it just as fast. The finding of facts may be common in a number of them.
Okay, so I'll give you the other part and then you can deal with them separately as you wish.
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay. The second section is twelve-sixty-eight point two-eight B-four. Fence should not exceed forty-eight inches in height. The height is measured from the surrounding surface of the ground and not from any structure or localized raised surface. The application indicates that fence is requested to be fifty-four inches in height. Therefore, it would be in violation of the ordinance by six inches. The applicant's requesting a variance of six inches to allow for the fifty-four inch height.
Okay. Thank you.
Just background information a little bit. I did a little research on this and found that in... The fence ordinance was actually adopted in the nineties, but at a point in time past that, the spear finials become a real issue. So that was brought before the village in two thousand nine, at which point in time the ordinance was revised to include the section that I'm referencing this evening having to do with not allowing those spear finials to be there. So that was changed in two thousand nine. Okay.
When was this fence installed, the original fence?
I went back and looked at the file. There were two fence permits issued. Back when the house was originally built, they had two fence permits, and most of the one permit was for the fence that surrounded the indoor or outdoor pool. And then I think there was another section on the second permit that the fence contained an area which addressed the indoor/outdoor pool. That house has, in the past, I don't know if it still does, but it had two swimming pools, one of which went beyond the exterior wall of the house and went outside for a little bit. So that had to be protected also. If there are other fences on the property, then those were installed without benefit of permits.
Okay. Thank you. Are those fences in place? So the, this is not a pool protection fence? Is what I'm hearing?
At this point in time, I was looking at the site plan and I looked at the overhead and I believe that a portion of it may, because I haven't actually walked the site myself, I'm dealing with just the application, it may be encompassing some of the pool area. You'd have to ask the owner, the applicant, that question.
When we get there, yeah. Okay.
And just to clarify, Bill, the spear head finial, was that part of the fence that was approved or the part that was not approved?
It was not, one of the original fences did not have that.
Okay. Thank you.
So if there is a spear finial top fence on that property, it wasn't part of the original two permits, because I actually went back and looked up those permits and the information. It was put in without permits.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from the applicant now.
Sorry, it's my first time doing this. So the current fence...
Excuse me. Would you state your name and who you represent here for the record?
Sure. My name is Michael Bates, I'm the owner of two-six-one-five-five Hawthorne, which is the property we're discussing.
Thank you.
Okay. So there is a fence currently there that's fifty-four inches and it has a spear. So we chose this new fence because it matches the current fence and it will butt the current fence. So for us to have a fifty-four inch spear top and then a forty-inch fence next to it would not be aesthetically pleasing. So that's my first comment. Second comment is, the fence is in the interior of the property and you cannot even see where we're going to put the fence from any of the streets surrounding the property.
Okay. Any other comments or any... What is the fence attached to or what is it? What's the purpose of the fence?
We would like a fence to keep coyotes out and other wildlife out. I mean, I really don't have anything else to tell you guys. I mean, I understand that, you know, I talked to Mr. Dinnon, he said that there was a concern of deer jumping the fence. It's actually up against our pergola and there are some trees and bushes, so I don't think a deer is going to have enough, I guess, ramp of time to run and jump over that fence. Now, if they can jump over a fifty-four inch fence from, you know, a foot away, then I could be wrong on that.
Hi, I'm Yolanda Bates, I am the other homeowner. I also wanted to let you all know that we have a mini golden doodle, a dog, and that is part of the reason why we want the fence, is just to keep him safe and to keep coyotes and again, other wildlife out of the backyard. And again, it is not, it will not be visible from the street, nobody else will see it.
The fence that I saw there was backed up by evergreen trees? Is that, is, that's where the fence is?
That's where, yes.
That's the existing fence, right?
The existing fence.
But that's not really, that fence isn't enclosing anything right now, right?
The pool, uh, the pool area.
What do you mean?
Pool, the swimming pool area.
Hmm. If this is the, this oval, partial oval. So I walked in here and I saw this, and then that had, that wasn't really a fence, it was more of a structure.
That's the pergola.
Right. The fence was over here.
Yeah, so this is only twenty-four feet, and then we have a rock wall there, so we were going to discontinue the fence there and then pick it back up here where the pergola is.
But when I was here, I looked across and there were evergreens here and there was a fence.
Correct, yeah. So that and then the pool on the other side of that. So there are, so that fence comes up here.
Yeah, it's not showing there, right? It's not showing on this drawing?
No, the existing fence, no. But there's an existing fence right here.
Right, right.
Which is...
Backed up by evergreens.
There are, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Got it.
I was thinking trees when you said evergreens. Yes, I wish.
But it didn't look like this was enclosed, because I walked into the driveway.
It's not.
It's not enclosed right now.
No. So this is the house, we want to put a fence here.
Oh, oh, you want to put it in?
Yeah, so here, here, and then up to the wall.
Okay, so this is, and this fence will be similar to this fence?
Correct. Yes.
Have you had a problem with coyotes?
They've been outside my dog's, when the muscle pads just spread out the frame, and I think they're right in that, it's like a wooded lot kitty corner from my backyard.
I wondered where they went.
Now, are you planning on putting ever, because what I saw, that existing fence, doesn't look like it's a hazard because of the evergreens that back it up.
So nobody would want to jump that fence. Are you planning on doing the same?
So I can't get any that tall, but I do want to put evergreens in front of the fence, yes. I don't want deer impaled on my fence.
Right, yeah, yeah. But that's really stopping them from thinking they can jump it.
They'll take a six-foot wood fence like they're nothing.
Yeah, but this thing is much, the evergreens are much higher.
Right, but if, with this fence height, they'll go over that fifty-four inch like it's nothing. And if they get stuck, you don't want to see what...
I can imagine.
I mean, there's been issues here in the village already where we've had them impaled for a couple of days because people weren't home.
So just so, I want to make this clear, we already have that fence that looks like the one we want to purchase.
Right.
So that's our reason for continuing that, as opposed, I don't know anybody that has two separate fences on their property. I mean, I'm sure there's somebody, but I don't know anybody that has two separate fences touching each other, different heights and styles.
Actually, that by itself is a violation of the ordinance.
What's that?
That's a violation to have two styles different in the same line.
So then I...
You know, and the other thing too is that there, we're going to put it around, there are pergola, so they, that is a deterrent too from them jumping, and there are trees in that area. Can you describe it? Like, I don't think...
So it's like there's evergreen trees, colorados, and then there's a pergola that's probably about this high, and then the fence will be here. So they'd be having to maneuver through the trees to jump over the fence. I mean, I'm not saying it's impossible, but I don't, I think they would just go somewhere else.
Are you, you folks the original owners?
No.
No. Mr. Foss was the original owner.
Okay.
Can I ask a favor, more of the side? Can we get a lot, I'm trying to visualize where this is and I can't visualize it.
Unfortunately, the wifi is down, so we can't.
Okay.
Trust me, we try ground.
Where the property is?
I know where the property is, I'm trying to figure out.
We try to visualize.
I mean, normally we get some sort of survey map with things drawn on it and, you know, building plans and stuff like that. I'm trying to visualize where this is on your property.
It's in the backyard.
I understand that, but I don't know where. It's on the south, it's on the south side of the property.
From the street, because the street-facing side is all bermuff trees.
Uh, yeah, there's no roads, just a south. So that goes...
Those would be at the bottom of your page.
This is north.
Where the house is?
Yeah. The house at...
That's not the house, that's like a pool house.
Uh, no, 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 sorry.
This is why I was getting confused.
This, no, that's the house, this is very small.
Little house. I know it's bigger.
It does have...
This is north.
But...
Okay.
Well, there's trees all in front, there's trees all around here, like this.
Got it.
Okay? I mean, there's multiple...
No, I know this is what the contractor gave you as a proposal.
Yeah.
And the house is kind of at an intersection of three streets.
Yeah, from a visual standpoint, I don't think it's a prob...
He won't be able to see it unless you're like walking on my property.
But from a danger standpoint is what I would be doing. Can you not have the same, could you not have the same fence without the top, what do we call them?
Finials.
Finials.
Well, then that'd be a violation of, in the ordinance, I think.
Fence materials and construction pattern must be consistent along a single lot line.
I went by looking, I thought it was on the north side.
This is a crazy question, but maybe it's not. I actually had a deer kebab last year in front of my grandchildren. It was horrible. Southfield Township had to remove it from the fence and, yeah. But a lot of these fences, the finial parts are held on with screws and are removable. Is that a possibility? I mean, I'm just asking, I'm not saying you have to do it, I'm just wondering, is that a possibility?
I don't know the answer to that.
You'd still have a sharp point, because it slides down, there's nothing, they'd have to do something different because they had to protect where that slides on.
Not necessarily, there's...
I think what's the same is they make the finials, the post coming up is a square.
Right.
Goes through the top rail and sticks up, and then the finial is actually secured by a set screw, so you would have maybe that much of the square sticking above the top rail.
Right.
Some fences are made that way, others, it's all one piece. The baluster as well as the finial is all one.
And my neighbor was able to actually lower his fence, because he had, you know, the old pool fence with the spear top on it. He was able to drop it down two feet, we've had no problems since. I mean, the deer have been able to clear it. And that's a really heavily treed area between the two properties.
How high is the finial? Three inches?
Apparently fifty-four inches above the ground.
No, the finial...
I just know by what was...
The finial itself that could be removed.
Well, I don't know.
No, I'm just saying.
That's what I'm asking.
That portion that we're considering could be removed, how valuable is that?
We could cut it off, I guess. I don't, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't have the specifics of the facts.
Yeah, I thought I saw it somewhere, but I don't.
Lyndon, you, what you're suggesting is that, if I'm interpreting what you're saying, you're saying, can the other finials be changed? If this goes ball top, can the other, other finials have ball top as well?
Yeah, or the way, all right, I am not an artist.
I'm not a builder.
I am not an artist, but a lot of these have a crossbar near the top, and then you've got the spindles that come down. The finials are attached here. And so what, if you could, I mean, you know, just to keep the fence that's there, you know, just as a point of comparison, if the finials could be removed, you would have a flat top to the fence, I mean...
You're talking about the existing fence?
The existing fence, and then maybe be able to put...
Or put the ball.
Just so aesthetically it looked good, but I don't know. I'm not, I'm not proposing, I'm just talking off the top.
That might be an issue because there's probably two-hundred-and-fifty feet of that fence and a couple hundred of those. So to go out and unscrew, I don't know how many of those would, probably, is probably not the answer.
Yeah.
That's where you are in that.
Yeah, no.
So I do have another comment now, I'm thinking if I look at this map here, there's part of this, most of this is elevated, so she has rock, she wrote rock wall here, but there's rock wall here and here, up to about right here. So, which is about this high. So then we just continue that fence there, again, just for aesthetic reasons, so the deer isn't going to jump. Maybe, I'm guessing?
Deer, in my area, the deer do jump the fence, which is a chain link fence with shrubs in front of it that hide the fence, but I've seen them physically jump it at the contract over there. It's kind of spectacular to see them do it, but...
They'll stand right at the edge of the fence and they'll just...
Spring up.
Spring up and right over it.
Yeah, and that's what nobody's shooting at them.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the board?
You know, I had one more concern that I wanted to make you all aware of. Two days ago, we received a fraud letter from the Planning Commission Village of Franklin. I have it and I will send it, but they, in this three-page letter, we were told that our proposal or whatever was approved and they asked us for forty-nine-hundred dollars. So I just wanted to know.
I'm on the Planning Commission, I can promise you.
I know, they told...
That didn't come from us.
I came up here the other day.
Wow.
So I just wanted to let you know, just so that you're aware, that there's some type of fraud, pardon me?
You don't know where it came from?
Well, the email address that it came from says Planning Commission Village of Franklin, So...
Yeah, we asked if they could send it to us, we sent it to our IT, see if there's anything.
Wow.
Probably just a very clever, but she brought it to the attention, and thank you for doing so.
That's amazing.
Yeah, how did they get, how did somebody get a hold of that?
Well, it says...
All because of the...
It says, planning, even the return address on it says, Planning-Commission Village of Franklin.
But it's usa.com is the giveaway.
I can't get the rest of the address.
Well, I don't think it's a giveaway to me. If it was four-hundred-and-ninety dollars, I would have paid it to, I mean, I just dropped my son off at you, feeding here to get here on time. I would have paid him. So, I mean, if you want to show them, you can, but it looks pretty...
Heather, is that, is that our actual...
Well, they have to send it to you, no, I think it's just a wishing attempt, but I wanted to make sure we sent it to our IT.
Is that because of the old, the old...
That's scary.
So there's the invoice of the taxes.
It's back public records, that part, if you can go on his website, Franklin's website.
So I think that's something that you should be aware of, be alert, and prevent this from Franklin.
Well, the big question is...
Again, if it was four-hundred-and-ninety dollars, that would seem reasonable either. Okay. And I wouldn't be here today and maybe lost enough requests there.
Forty-nine-hundred bucks?
That's...
I'm sorry, was it forty-nine-hundred or four...
Four-thousand-nine-hundred.
Okay, thank you.
I'd say if it was less, it looked so official, I probably would have paid it.
So, you're going to drop the cash at my house later?
Oh.
Bills.
Unbelievable.
That's a, that's a new one.
I'm not easy to fool. That one would have gotten me too. Yeah. It's incredible.
Can I ask one question on the fencing itself now? You said that, I'm going to point, because we don't have the AV, this is, is this the only place where, where the, where the new fence intersects the old fence?
Correct, yes. But on this, see, there's some over here too, though.
Oh, it goes over there.
Yeah, connects here and here, so two sections.
Oh, so the old fence here.
Okay, so the old fence is here, and then you're going to start with new right there?
Correct. And then the old fence is here, and I was going to put the new here. So it's on two sides.
Is this your, is this the drawing you made?
Pardon me?
Who made this drawing?
Fence company.
Ah, the lady at the fencing company.
Oh, I mean, she came out and...
Oh, yeah, she was, yes.
I'm surprised she didn't put the old fence in, because I'd like to see, and you don't get a complete picture of what's going on.
No, I don't think she anticipated we'd be here.
That's a quote for what they're going to do, it isn't what they already have on the site.
Because it's on the same plane.
Very solemn, do I have information on what's on the site on a quote from fence company?
Because when I walked out there and tried to make sense of it, I didn't see, I said, where's the other fence?
I wasn't aware of that.
Not helpful.
Bill, so they can't, is the ordinance that we're, they can't tie the two fences together?
A very strict interpretation would be, that's true. The problem is, is that it says, "Consistent along a single lot line." Well, the only one that's even closer near a lot line is one way over here and not the one around the rest of the interior.
There's nothing near a lot line?
Right. So, it, the idea behind it, I'm sure, was to keep fences consistent, but on the interior of a property, they probably didn't care a whole lot, okay? I know this was discussed the other night, I listened to that, by the way.
Yeah.
And that issue was brought up, but you're right, Randy, it's not on a lot line.
Yeah.
So, it, a very liberal interpretation may apply it, but then a very strict interpretation, reading the words that are on the page, is not their lot line, so from my perspective, I'm not sure how I would address it.
How tall is that rock wall that it's going to butt to?
Maybe about five feet.
And there's earth behind it, or is that, is it, is it ground below it? I mean, are we looking, is the wall like this and there's low here, low here?
Can you move the mic, sorry?
I'm not clear on what you're asking me, I'm sorry.
Is there dirt on both sides of the wall, or dirt on one side and the wall's exposed lower on the other side? I believe the dirt's, the wall on the exterior, showing to the exterior of the property is the wall.
Correct.
And then on the interior side or on the pool side, the dirt is almost level with the top, if I remember that correctly.
Correct, yes, yeah.
So the animals theoretically could come over the top of that?
They could.
Okay.
If they're inside jumping out. More often, you're worried about outside jumping in.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a little bit of an incline on that wall too. I mean, I'm not a deer, but it's a little, you know, I think it's more so for a goat, a mountain goat to climb up it, but they could jump it, I'm sure, if they really try hard.
So the fence is not going to go in front of the rock wall, it's going to, affix somewhere or...
We are, so if this is the rock wall in front of me, we have a fence here and here, and then the rock wall would drop down, so the fence is up here. And then, oops, the rock wall is down. So we're not putting the fence all along the rock wall.
Got it, no.
You know, if we were worried about deer impaling themselves, I would think the higher fence would be more of a danger than the lower fence, right? The deer would be more likely to be able to clear a lower fence than a higher fence.
Sure. Well, maybe.
They don't clear the fence at all.
Yeah, maybe.
High, low, or anywhere in between.
Well, if they get impaired and pale, though, they didn't calculate correctly.
Yeah, apparently, but...
So I would think they would be more likely to fail to judge it when it was higher.
That's one of my...
I feel like a deer is going to jump the fence if it wants to. I mean, I can't keep out all deer. This is just...
Right, no, I'm, I'm thinking, though, they're going to jump the fence if they want to, so, and if you go along Franklin Road and you look at the fence along the cemetery, you know, it's not all the same, you know, it drops down at certain spots. I'm thinking it's not unsightly to have the same fence, same looking fence, but lower down at some place. In other words, it drops down.
I mean, cemetery and my backyard are two different things though, sir.
No, it would have to be a variance, that's what we're here for, because what is there now is a spear-top fence, which we no longer allow.
Are we talking about getting rid of that?
We don't know when that spear-top went in.
I don't know, I'm not sure when that is, but it was not there as part of the original permit for the fence around the pool. It's starting to come back to me now. I was the inspector when that house was built, as well as all the way through its completion, is, I remember now why that one section that has the wall doesn't have a fence. It's because the, the whole purpose of a fence around the pool area is to keep people out of the area. And if you have a wall there, it's going to keep people out, so you don't need a fence And if you have a wall there, i- it's gonna keep people out, so you don't need a fence where the wall is. And it doesn't, from the code perspective, if you can be in the pool area and get out, who cares? I mean, the whole point of having gates that self-close and all that is to let people get out. So, the part, I, now it's coming back to me about where that wall is and the top of the wall really doesn't have a fence on it, if I remember correctly.
No, there's no fence.
Yeah. But you can't get into the pool area, because like you said, you gotta climb the wall. Well, the wall becomes the barrier, so. But, no, we don't know when it went in, however, if it went in prior to two thousand nine, there was no ordinance against the.
But there was no permit pulled either, so we don't know.
Well, the permits that I have did not show the finials on top of the fences, okay? So, I don't, don't ask me what happened in between. I, that property is pretty much shielded from the world.
It is.
So I don't know what Mr. Foss had done or didn't do, or, what have you had it, a couple of years now?
Yes.
Yeah. Prior to that, Mr. Foss owned it, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
So, what happened at that point, and because it's shielded, I.
Because you would've approved the, the original fence, right?
Yes.
Okay. So it's after you approved.
I don't know how it got fifty-four inches tall either, and that's what concerns me more than the finial top, other than it got changed out someplace along the way.
You know, I get the sense that we really don't understand the property completely, and we don't have a plan to have a look at it and see what they want to do. Does, does this have to be decided soon, or is this something that?
Okay, what you, what you can do, because you lack information, if you lack information, let me put it in a different way. Not that you do. If you believe you lack information, you can put this off to the next zoning board meeting. Typically, I don't suggest that, because the, the night for decision is the night that it's advertised and it's on the record and that. But I don't think it's, uh, fair or correct to deny somebody when you don't have enough information to either approve it or deny it. Does that make sense? Yeah. We've done this in the past and we've had people come back at no charge to them, but submit additional information so that you can make an intelligent decision. So, we, we do want to make sure that that's where the board goes tonight. At least the board makes it clear to the applicant what you need, so that when they come back, the decision.
I think what's, what's coming up that's missing is a clear picture of how this fence shows up on your property. Because this is not very much of an explanation.
Agreed.
It's an explanation to you, uh, from the fence company as to where you agreed we're gonna put a fence to get a financial proposal to you. And I, I realize it would be acceptable to you from that standpoint. But what Bill's mentioning is, it's not clear to the members of this board exactly where it's going and what the different ramifications are of that fence. And as a result, if we force a decision, I can't tell you right now, it'd be positive or negative.
Well, what, what questions can I ask so you have a better understanding of the layout there?
I think what they're asking for is more visuals, not verbiage. In other words, I think what they're asking for is to put this on hold for you to submit back through me, to them, pictures of the area, a, a whole sight of the property showing existing fence versus where the new one's gonna go. So it's more information that they have so they can make an intelligent decision. That property has multiple levels back there, which is hard to visually look at on a, on a piece of paper looking down on it. So pictures are worth a thousand words, they say, and that, in this case, I think that's an appropriate response. So I don't, I don't think they're looking for more discussion. I don't think that'll make it any more clear, if I'm not mistaken, what I'm hearing from you, John, is that correct?
Well, yes.
Okay.
The, the basic decisions on the zoning board are, is there something that we're looking at that justifies a variance? And justifies a variance in such a way that does not set a precedent? Because if we don't have enough facts to, to make a decision that varies from the ordinance, we can't give that decision. So, and if we do make a decision based on very few facts and very few uniquenesses of the property, then the ordinance goes away. It has no meat anymore.
Well, the oppo, then the other part of that issue, if I can interject, is you don't want them to deny this application. Because if, if they do, which they have the right to do, you've got twenty days to file an appeal in the circuit court, because their decision is final, okay? The other issue is you can't come back and ask for the same thing again. So what I'm trying to do here is make sure they have the information they're looking for through you. And the best way to do that is to put that on hold and you bring them the information, because if they follow through on this tonight and they deny it, it's done. You can't ask for the same thing again.
Okay, I mean, I'm not, it's not urgent that I get this fence installed, but I have been waiting a few months already, just to put that on the record. I've, I've waited for this night for a few months already.
Yes, you have, because there, there's processes we have to go through, which drives it out too.
I get it. The other, I guess, concern I have is, is since I have the existing fence that's fifty-four inches, how do we get around that? How, how do you approve a forty-eight inch fence? And now I'm against an ordinance, because now I have two different fences.
I, I.
So I'm kinda between the rock and the hard.
Minutes ago stating that a strict interpretation would give you that answer. But we did discuss that it's not along a lot line, so I think we've got a, we've got a ability to do that.
That, that aren't originally the way I interpreted. If I had three pieces of property in a straight line, or even curved, each, and somebody has a fence, the subsequent fences that would have butted have to be of the same height and preferably same appearance, so that they would look uniform and look presentable. You don't want to have a wrought iron fence followed by a white picket fence followed by stockade fence. Split rail, all in the same row. It just doesn't aesthetically look pleasing. It may look pleasing in other parts of the country where you've got a lot of acreage. But it doesn't look pleasing when your, your lots are two hundred feet, three hundred feet, and it changes like that. So, that's why it was set about on property lines. Doesn't say within the property how you do it.
Okay.
And what you're tying to is not in the same line, you're coming off of it. So your, your initial fence is here, and it looks like you're trying to come this way.
Well, no, continuation.
Pardon me?
That's not accurate.
This is new, that's not lot line, that's.
Yeah, but that's his existing fence and this is a new.
Well, that's what we need to clarify.
There, there's nothing that we would do. We wouldn't say to you, you have to take that fence down. I mean, even though it's not what was approved.
Or permitted.
Or permitted, you have the right to have that grandfathered, but the ultimate goal of zoning is that eventually everything come into compliance. And so, you know, it, and, and we've had a lot of discussions about that in, in planning, as well as in zoning. You know, if, if your fence were to have gotten knocked over and more than fifty percent of it had gotten destroyed by a truck pulling into your backyard, that would've been another issue. But, you know, if you're replacing it section by section to eventually bring it into code, am I?
Yep.
Okay.
You're heading in the right direction.
So that's, that's just sort of the background with how we operate as far as zoning. Because I learned that from a very wise man who taught me that and it's stuck. But that is the ultimate goal, is that everything do, does get brought into code.
Forming.
So I would like to make this comment though before I exit. You, you cannot see any of these fence, these fences that are going up. You will, you cannot see them from the street. I mean, if you're like peering through bushes and peeking through, then yes, but my entire property is surrounded. And where I'm putting these fences, you cannot see them.
Understand that.
Okay.
That's, that's not lost on me, I get that. And you're here and you're.
I get it, I'm not putting a white fence up with a wrought iron fence on Frank, on my side of Franklin Road, I'm not doing that. It's on the interior of my property.
It's easier to ask for forgiveness. I get that.
Which, yeah.
I know, I get it. I, I, I'm, I'm hearing you here.
Okay, so, any other questions of me?
Not right now, thank you.
All right, so will you all, I mean, I'm not gonna force you into a vote.
We haven't decided yet.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's on the table for discussion.
Okay.
Among the board.
Can I say a word?
We haven't, have you reopened publicly?
We haven't got public comments yet and I don't know, I don't know that we will just yet, okay? What's the feeling? Comments among the board?
I couldn't make a decision tonight based on what we have here.
I think I would need more information to make a decision, however, I am still concerned that regardless of what information we get, the issue of the finials is still out there.
Understand.
And the height.
I'm at the same point Connie is with the, the finials, because if you ever seen, going back to seeing a deer, your children, your grandchildren saw one, it's not a pretty sight, and I know it's inside the yard, but you don't want to hear that, you don't want to hear that squeal.
I guess at this point, I'll entertain a motion for delay action, postponement. However, someone would like to word the, uh.
But I think we have to say what we want to, to make, to make a decision, to mention it. What do we need?
We want what we normally want, and that is as much information as the applicant can give us. Uh, descriptive pictures, uh, overhead view, uh, displays. So it's, it's, it's clear and concise that we can draw the facts from in order to make a decision. In order for everybody on the board to, you know, have their, have their opinions formulated. Not now, but when facts are all presented. And I'd ask you to withhold your, your decision-making personally. And if we delay this until we have all the, all the facts in front of us at another meeting, if that's what you'd like to do. But I can't, I can't do that without a motion, uh, if that's what you'd like to do.
Can I ask, Bill, can I ask Bill another question? Bill, if he went with a forty-eight inch fence without finial and went around, he, he could, he could go with this with no problem, right?
Do it tonight.
He could do it tonight.
Didn't even be here. If he had a forty-eight inch fence with no finials on top, I'd have issued a permit when he submitted it. Those are the two issues that.
The height and the finials is the two.
The height and the finials are the two issues. Uh, Mr. Chair, um, we will not be having a meeting September eighteenth, but we will be having a meeting October sixteenth. And so I just want that clear as you go through your discussion and I want to make sure that Mr. Bates understands that also. I don't want him to expect, think he's coming back on the eighteenth of September.
Well, why can't we reinstate the meeting on the eighteenth?
Pardon?
Can we reconstitute, reinstate the meeting on the eighteenth to address this? It was canceled because I assumed there was no act.
There was nothing else on it.
Now there's something on that date.
No.
Not necessarily. No, the next planned meeting would be October sixteenth.
I'm confused, I'm sorry. So we canceled the meeting on, in September, because there was nothing on the agenda. But if we move this to the September meeting, then there is something on the September agenda.
This would be the only thing on that meeting and it, it is a lot of work to get that done. And we're gonna have a meeting on the sixteenth of October and we can put it all together for everything.
I think part of the problem with September that it was, that presentation wasn't fully finished. But I think the other part of the September meeting is the situation in front of office. Okay, that we're not fully.
Staffed.
Staffed to be able to do it.
Got it.
So that being said, I guess what you want to look at now is, do you have enough to make a decision, or do you need some facts you think would change your decision from what you would make now? I don't think I have enough, and I think that's what the board has said, is that we need some additional information.
At this point, you only have two options then. Either bring, either postpone it to the next available meeting, which would be October sixteenth, and/or act upon it. But I, but the ramifications of acting upon it with a lack of information clearly says to me, I've been to enough zoning board meetings, it's not a good thing for the Bateses, because it, it would most likely get denied with lack of information. Just in general speaking, I can't determine for you, but just in general. And if this gets denied the way it is, it can't come back.
Understand.
Okay, so.
I move that we table.
I do have, uh, two, one, one comment, one question. My comment is, I just went ahead, just so you can understand. What we're looking for is the fence here, in between there, and then right around here. And then there's, you see the rock wall? That's, that's rock, the lighter stones. It comes about right here. And then we want it to go right behind the pergola.
Is it going inside or outside these two trees, or whatever those are?
Outside.
It's going outside those trees?
Correct, so if you see, see the, um.
The rock wall?
Yeah.
You're unfortunate, we're gonna have to like walk down.
Yeah, that's fine, I, I, I'll do that.
We need something like this, just what you're showing us with the, the fence superimposed on.
So, well, can I just show you this and then I'll, I'll ask my question? And then the other part was over here. And this tennis court has a fence, this tennis court is surrounded by fence. So we were going, going to abut the tennis court. So right here, across here, right here, around, stop. Little piece here, little piece here. Straight across, down to the pergola, around.
And this is going outside the tree? So.
It's going on the inside of the tree. You see that little white, you see that white pergola?
Yeah, okay, that's the.
Right up against the pergola.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And then.
Mr. Bates?
Yes.
Can I hold you up for one second, sir? To, to be clear, all of the members of the board have to see the same information at the same time. And for a private discussion to be happening on the one end of the table and not really inclusive of everybody, that is not happening. And that's one of the basic rules of the zoning board of appeals, is that individual members can't have information different than other members of the board.
Even if he shows it to everybody?
But it may not come across the same all the way down the table. It's up to the chairman and it's up to you guys whether you want to accept that. But I think the information we're asking for, we're clarifying everybody could do it at one time.
We're, we're getting too far off of the basic framework of the zoning board and the agenda on how things are functioning and how things are due for a uniform basis. Uh, because this board does make decisions and they do stand. And it's starting to segment. And that doesn't allow us to have a uniform basis of decision-making. And that decision-making can be for you, it could be against what you want, but I'm just saying it's, it's starting to unravel in a presentation standpoint. And that, from my experience, never works out well.
Okay, can I ask my question now?
I will give you one more comment and then I'll let you, let you state your question. The, you always have a choice in front of this board until we go to a vote on a decision to ask to withdraw. And that's without penalty.
Okay.
I need to let you know that, that's all.
My, my question is, I, I just had a discussion with my wife, we're, we're not set on the, the points on the fence. And we're offering a compromise, which I think hopefully will satisfy everyone in this room. We, we don't have to have the, um, finials. I'm asking, can you grant a variance now? I don't know if I can adjust my request for variance, okay? But we don't have to have the finials on there if the fence is the same height. If the fence is the same height, and we just continue it along, then we're satisfied with that. And I think that alleviates your concern of the deer is getting impaled. We don't want to hurt any deer. That's not our intent. So, that is my question. If I... If we eliminate the finials...
You can withdraw any and all parts of the denial.
Okay.
So, you were saying that you will do the fence without the finials, and then you're withdrawing that part of the ordinance or that variance request.
That's what we wish to do.
Okay, so now you're just wishing to deal with the height difference. I don't know if that changes the board's thought process on this whole thing or not.
So, it would be a flat fence, a flat-out?
Correct.
It changes my opinion.
So, that's why I just wanted to ask that question.
I understand.
Do you still want to be 54 inches?
Yes, just because we...
Okay, I want to make it clear, that's all.
What's the height of the fence without the finials? Are they four inch finials?
They didn't give me that.
I know.
I think the interior, fence being in the interior of the property, I wouldn't think that height is as much of a concern as if it was on the perimeter.
I understand that point, and I know at this point, at this time, you cannot see a fence in that property. However, the shrubs and trees are of a temporary nature compared to the duration of a fence. And we've seen many things come through, including deer eating our shrubs that have made them quite visible. And not everybody can replace them, the trees and the shrubs, and they're gone, and then we see it. Part of the reason for the height of a fence was to not make it blocking of an area, of the opacity of being, we'll see through it, and not being, cutting off like we have seen in other areas of the city, not our city, but in the county, where they're putting up fences that are, you can't see through when you drive through the area, and it's like walls. That was part of the reason, I think, of 48-inch maximum height. You can do anything under that.
You could see over it if you couldn't see through it.
Yeah, well, opacity, you can see through it.
The ordinance addresses the height of fences...
Yes.
...in two different ways. Fences in general, anywhere on the property. And then, there's exceptions that can be made for privacy screens, which allow a taller fence. But the fence ordinance also addresses fences that are what's called perimeter features. So, I understand what you're saying relative to it's in the interior of the property, so... But the point is, the ordinance addresses all fences on every property, no matter where their location is.
Yeah. And the problem is one of precedent setting of uniqueness of a property, uniqueness of a location, that does not set a precedent that everybody can come back and say, "Well, they got a 54-inch fence. I want a 62-inch fence." And there are different reasons for it. We've gone through a number of those, where they want to put a perimeter fence around the entire property for their own privacy at six feet, to keep people out. And that was just something that we couldn't deal with. We couldn't approve. And you have to look at, when you approve something, what have I done to the ordinance? Is... Can we come up with findings of fact that make any variance we might grant totally unique to this property and not others in the village? Because if you do, you know, you can grant a variance. If you can't make it unique to that property, then you have to not grant the variance, because you essentially start making a loss in the ordinances, and that's what we're not... We're not here for that. We're here to grant what we can, not make... Not change the law.
The finial's not the problem anymore. It's just the height.
No, the finial's not the problem.
It's just the height.
Yeah, the applicant's already requested to withdraw that part of his request. They're not doing the finials.
But it was just the... And it was actually set up as two separate violations of the ordinance, and we were looking at them separately, per Bill's suggestion. And now, we're just looking at one as the height one, and...
But the hardship could be that the existing fence surrounding the majority of the property is already at 54 inches, correct?
Understand.
I'm just asking that as a point of reference.
What I'm asking, if the board feels they have enough facts to put something together and make a decision tonight, or not?
So, there's really a six-inch difference, right? 54, 48, and you take the finials away, which might be what?
No.
No, that... The finials are over and above the 54 inches, usually.
I don't know that. Don't know.
Yeah, we don't know. Can I address the Batess?
Yeah.
All right, do you know if the fence without the finials is a 54? Because if it's not, we're gonna wind up back here again if they say, "Oh, no, the one without the finials is 52, or 47, or whatever." Is there, you know, that would make a difference. Is there a 48-inch that matches your fence without finials, or a 52-inch, I mean?
He's looking it up on his phone.
Okay. Good luck. There's no internet.
Well, I'm very hesitant of asking the board to make a decision on facts that are not facts, on conjecture, because that's not a basis of making good decisions. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. I make a motion that we table this petition. Is that the right word? This petition till the next available meeting, when the Bateses can come back with pictures and some diagrams, and maybe samples of what the fence will look like, and any other illustrative goods that we can have to help us make an informed decision. I have motion to the floor. Second? I have a second over here. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. We'll discuss it, and we'll have it before us again October 16th. I think that's the date. Or it's the third Thursday in October. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Pictures are worth a thousand words. Politics of work.
Under old business, we need to look at the prior minutes. First off, let me state that we have a couple of letters here relevant to this particular applicant, and I'd like to have them included in our packet for next time. Do you have a copy of this, Bill?
Oh, last week?
No. Genevieve Zinneren and...
Reinhardt.
Right.
Reinhardt sent letters in regarding this.
Yeah, we have them.
Has anybody been out to see that property?
See what?
Yeah, but you can't get inside of it. It's very shielded.
I came in the back way, and I went around the front way, and I couldn't... There were some things I couldn't see, and...
I couldn't figure it out.
Well...
Okay.
Okay, let's go on to the next one. Go get the prior minutes. For approval. I move that we approve the meeting of the minutes of the July 17th meeting.
Second.
Moving to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Abosed. Motion carries. Minutes approved. Thank you. I move we adjourn this meeting. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's over. Thank you.